The price of the excavator was fifty-four thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. And they're also gonna purchase a bucket, bucket of, for one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And, and the trailer, uh, I'm sorry, the trailer was not included in that price, but there was, they did get a, a quote for the trailer. And I'd bring the trailer, it's only about two thousand dollars.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah?
Yes.
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 Okay, we do have a couple executive sessions lined up, but before we go into that, probably won't have any, uh, legislation afterwards, so I'd like to hear council comments before we go in.
I'll put on a different app.
Yeah, I had one, I had one council comment, I'd like to read from the gleason report. It says, "I attended the city manager's department heads meeting. Great communication has developed among the various city departments, and our operations have benefited from these meetings." Like to hear that.
As the commander of American Gleason, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank our city election department. They have gone above beyond, helping the American Gleason, after parts of our parks with the Fourth of July celebration, getting it set up to fry french fries that everybody seemed to like. And also, I made a couple phone calls, and I were out there with the bucket truck, helping them put up speakers for the, uh, work tan. Every time I call them, I need help, they're right there, and I, I'd like, like, like to thank the city very much, Mr. Commander.
Thank you for doing that. Anyone else, council comments? There? Not today? Okay, come on, here.
I've got one.
Okay.
Uh, just congratulations, this is Miss Beatty over here, since, uh, her, uh, spending areas coming forward. We see those things too, so congratulations.
We'll have every day. Okay, we have, uh, executive session, uh, pending for two different things. One is a discussion of pending potential litigation. The other is for discussion of collective bargaining. You can give her the numbers as per for that. There will be no action afterwards, Dan says, so could I have a motion to move to executive session?
Move to an executive session.
Discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
No, yes.
Yes.
Before we go, Mark, give me anything to say about the enterprise zone.
Uh, well, I think it's a good idea. I know we did look at wanting to do it for the, the whole city, but there was some issues there with the cross town lines there, so it's definitely absolutely smart idea to do it for as much territory as, uh, use essentially the whole city within Palmia County is definitely the way to go, because you're, you have the infrastructure in place. And then, but you have committed hate. You know, each individual company that comes has to present their case, with the use of the enterprise zone is sort of, I guess, the way I would word it. So, since you have, you repassed it, you know, you will do what you did, but you'll have it already set up so that you're not, you know, you're not tripping over that. You know, potentially competing against, uh, another, another town, which has, that's a problem.
It's a bit better for the city. Okay, executive session coming up.
I want to thank you, buddy. Please, we're not gonna stand there. Everything was great.
I did it just for you.
Thank you.
I should worry about that. I'm not gonna be all the time, that's probably screw up something. Your berries? Oh, yeah. Yes, we know. Twenty-five animals, just cancel my wedding. We're obviously just a short line. Real man laugh about three. Oh, yeah. Very glad he came, that's a good thing. He went along pretty good this year, his last year. Yeah. Well, we helped first. Well, yeah. For eight years. Yeah, you're gonna have to come back. Your mom says. Doug will come back. What did you need a little tax?
I haven't, I haven't heard anybody. I have a party tomorrow. I mentioned you don't have a weather, it's like, oh. Right, even though this can do that. We had to get it last month, we had to have it certified. Good on you.
Hey, Mark. I'm not trying to call you while you're on vacation yet. I'll try not to call you while you're on vacation yet.
Yeah.
Okay, some more questions. I'd like to ask a question about this guy's thing about the home.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Mark?
I, I live out that way. I live past Howard.
You know, it's the only means.
No, I don't. Well, she's home. Are you in the executive session, uh?
Me?
You have to, yeah.
No.
Okay, I got a question for you then.
I, I get lucky most of the time. Okay, here's the thing, this is what was certified through the county. This is on the tax level. It's about two hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Two no's, and it's for the fire protection. And a five years.
So that's per year?
Yes. That's per year. And that is a renewal.
Which no cost, yep.
No increase in taxes. And that one? This was, uh, for the air grants. That's for the drug task force. And this is for purchasing the excavator. And this one's for sure, he's, uh, I don't have this one.
The enterprise, oh, sure, okay.
I cannot have that, I can only work at this desk, so I have to get it. Got that one, got that one. Just a copy of this.
Here's a question. Was that part of the, was that part of the proposal?
Like, which version of like this?
Well, those were, these are the original ones.
Oh, uh. Well, what, what happens is, I typically. But the same news journal. You were often.
He was a big part.
Often.
He was the biggest.
So, we share stories with each other, like.
Yeah, people were supposed to pay. All their assessments.
And I guess it kind of depends on what. Kind of covered your.
And we get to the, or we get to the real estate tax.
But when, but when make, uh, lot, uh, property.
Yeah.
They paid off the assessments.
I guess it kind of just depends on how much.
To the county.
A certain area you're interested in.
In the county.
Obviously, the same one's gonna be working, so same one, when they have.
Remitted monies to the city. Wasn't that supposed to cover all the costs?
Right.
The, the, the cost.
Only, only the delinquents. Only the.
Me personally, or their?
They still have, so two thousand five, two thousand five of payments.
I can tell you why our reporters covered it, I don't know.
That was only, that didn't cover.
Delinquents.
The link ones, and what it actually did, we, we ended up borrowing money. Before I, I started here, they actually borrowed money from these sewer funds to pay their bonds.
That was.
And when they got.
Delinquent payments.
Well, we were marginally.
No, but we were paying them, they would have been.
They would, yeah.
Working for us, but it covers these liberal. So.
So. Yeah, it was to cover the delinquents' payments from.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot.
But then we got the money back from the county.
Right, and that did. We traced for one million two hundred dollars back in the sewer fund. Because that's where we borrowed money from, to pay the bonds.
Now, we still have some, so many years left on those bonds. And those, and the money.
See, yeah, I'm sure, I know we share all of our, all of our. But it depends on how much space they have. Basically, priority of, you know, obviously, they may come to save you. That, yeah. Yeah, basically, yeah.
But, yeah, those, those we've made. At least they have, so far.
And that's covering a part of our payments.
So, so far. Well, yeah, well, we, yeah, we, we still have the second half to actually. Yeah, but, um, yeah, last year, it was able to cover.
I was, I don't know, I was kind of nervous about.
What, what this will do, what this refinancing is doing is, is going to obviously.
Really saying, I want to sell.
Well, it's going to lower the payments and per se, what he's doing the first couple of years ago. Okay, the first couple of years, and like he's saying, if we were to take that instead of, instead of spending it, or not, not spending it, but Not using it to pay.
It's like, where are we going?
Where's the reserve? One, well, one part is for the funds, sewer fund. I mean, it'll be. Where's the actual?
I agree, yeah, I, I can take that side off. Obviously, obviously a little buy.
It would be an arm, not his, not any of his. Because basically, they're going to pay the assessments and with the refinancing, the assessments.
It's kind of unfortunate that it kind of.
More. So what he wants to do is just act as an agent for the city to sell the bonds? Yeah. Or to refinance the bonds? Basically, that's what they're doing. But at the same time. Why can't we do that next time? Why do we need him as an agent? One of us, who hires? Well, as far as it was, just one. They just prepare all of the things.
No, you can't.
We always hire.
Now, if you do this, all access they have. Ever leave.
We have. At least I don't remember using an agent.
It's a core.
They have, I don't, we have refinancing.
You're so.
Oh, and initial, what is it, refinancing, just, just like, initial funding? But in the past, I know you referred to like, you contacted the agents to get rates and that sort of thing, or bonds that we get to issue. For different projects, or, or like a lot of. It's a lot of. I'm already up here. But, you know, and, and, and they have a contract. It's very expensive. Just have more G S A than not.
That's all my own tax budget, right?
Yeah.